Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the October 28th City Council Meeting. Please rise to salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call of the members. Counselor Argenzio?
Here.
Here, Counselor Janino?
Here.
Here, Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Here.
Here, Counselor Haas?
Here.
Here, Counselor Hermio is absent. Counselor Kelly?
Here.
Here, Counselor McKenna?
Here.
Here, Counselor Novoselsky?
Here.
Here, Counselor Silvestri?
Here.
Here, Counselor Zambudo, absent, and Council President Cogliandro?
Here.
Here, quorum is present. Approval of the Journal of the Regular Meeting of October 7th?
Point of personal privilege, Mr. President.
State your point, Counselor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Before we start tonight, I'd like to take a moment to remember a great Revere resident and a great Revere man. Last week, Revere lost Cosmo Delegro, 96 years old. He was the former building inspector, and anyone that's had a pool put in in Revere probably knows him from Cosmo Pools, but up until a couple weeks ago, he was still his usual self, talking politics, and he was a great friend and later on happened to be a family member, but he was a great man and he will be missed. Thank you.
If you would all join us in a brief moment of silence, please. Back to the regular order of business.
Public hearings, calendar item number three. Hearing called as ordered on an ordinance further amending the revised ordinances of the city of Revere, establishing a program to divert waste from landfills and incinerators to offset waste disposal costs.
This is a public hearing. We'll open the floor to proponents. Anyone in favor? Seeing and hearing none, and we'll close that side. Do we have a proponent? Oh, he's working his way through the crowd. Got it. Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Good evening. Tom Skrowski, 281 Broadway, Chief of Planning and Community Development. I'm not necessarily sure if I'm a pro or a con here. I think generally speaking, though, the city administration, the key of administration, is behind a composting effort that we've already begun to undertake, both with funding from the WIN mitigation fund, but also just looking at other opportunities and grants we can take on. I think we spoke about that at a previous meeting. I think we take issue with some of the details in the ordinance itself, which I think ties our hands, both from a procurement standpoint, but also looking at how much funding we're actually earmarking. I think it unnecessarily restricts what we do. That being said, we will be taking on composting, whether it's specifically to the letter of how this works out, or maybe some mixture thereof, and I know the council's not here today, but we can talk through details further on.
Thank you, sir. Are there any opponents? Anyone wishing to speak against? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close that side. Any counselors wishing to speak? This is going to be referred to the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee.
Calendar item number four. Hearing called as ordered on an ordinance amending metered rates of the revised ordinances of the city of Revere.
We'll open it to proponents. Anyone in favor? Good evening, sir. Name and address for the record.
Thank you, sir. Ira Novoselsky, 53, Dehong Street, Revere. I had requested the counselors to submit this, realizing that there were some owner-occupied homes that were changed from residential rate to a commercial rate, and what we're trying to do is get those 40 or 50 people around the city back to a residential rate and make it a little easier for them. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any other people in favor? Seeing and hearing none. Closing that side. Are there any opponents? Anyone not in favor? Seeing and hearing none, and we'll close that side of the hearing. City counselors wishing to speak? Counselor Argenzio?
Thank you, Mr. President. This motion I put in pertains to a very small amount of four, five, and six family homes. These are owner-occupied. We're always complaining about absentee landlords. These people are in their homes. They're using it as income to support their families, and they're paying residential tax rates, so I think it's only appropriate that they pay residential water rates. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors wishing to speak? Seeing and hearing none, this will be referred to Legislative Affairs.
Calendar item number five. Hearing called as ordered on an ordinance further amending food truck locations.
This is a public hearing. Are there any proponents, people in favor? Seeing and hearing none, and we'll close that side. Any opponents? People not in favor? Seeing and hearing none, and we'll close that side. Any counselors wishing to speak? Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Thank you, Mr. President. After receiving quite a few letters from residents in that neighborhood, I would like to place this on file until Counselor Hermio gets back.
I don't think you want to place it on file, then. You probably want to just put this into Subcommittee.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
That would be fantastic. Thank you.
Any other... Counselor McKenna?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just going to say that I would like to put an amendment on this also, to keep it away from parks that kids play at, because if you put food trucks there and they run by generator, or if they run by plug-in, there's still fumes, and if the kids are playing, like for instance, Sunny Myers Park, the kids play from 3:00 to 7:00 in the daytime, and if you put a food truck there near the park, there's fumes that are going to run from this truck, and the kids are playing, so it's going to harm the kids. So I would like to put an amendment, if we can, to keep it away from any recreational parks, wherever there's kids playing, and thank you. That's it.
Counselor, I think we would have to take the amendment up in the Subcommittee.
Okay, that's fine.
So if there's no other counselors, this will also be referred to Legislative Affairs.
Next up is the Legislative Affairs Subcommittee Report.
Counselor Argenzio?
Thank you, Mr. President. There were two items before us tonight. The first one was regulations on veterans' memorial polls. We looked favorably on this, and I'd like to call a roll call on the motion as amended.
Ordered on a second reading as amended. Ordered on a third reading as amended. Roll call for endorsement and ordainment. Excuse me.
Shall the City Council approve an ordinance establishing rules and regulations for veterans' memorial polls? Counselor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hermio is absent. Counselor Kelly?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes, and Council President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, the ordinance is engrossed and ordained as amended.
Thank you, Mr. President. The second item was an ordinance establishing rules and... excuse me, an ordinance repealing the prohibition of non-medical marijuana establishments. The committee discussed this briefly, and we voted to put it on file.
Council President, I'd like to file a minority report.
And I'd like to call for a roll call on placing it on file.
I'd like to file a minority report.
Counselor Kelly has asked to give a minority report. Share your report, Counselor.
I'd like the full council to vote on whether or not this issue should in fact be placed on file. We have an incredible amount of residents here that worked incredibly hard to try to make sure their voice was being heard in their opposition against the repeal of this ban. As a result of putting this motion on file, they won't have an opportunity to be heard tonight. They won't have an opportunity to see and to know how each counselor feels on this issue and what each counselor's position is on this issue, and I believe we owe that responsibility to these residents who worked so hard organizing, trying to have their voices heard. So in that regard, I would like a minority report filed to take a vote on whether or not we should keep this on file, or whether or not we should let this go to a hearing tonight and vote on it. Thank you.
What is specifically the roll call on?
I'd like a roll call on whether or not we keep the motion, the ordinance, on file, or whether or not it go to a full hearing and vote tonight.
Understood. Counselor Zambudo?
I'm just a little confused. I heard mentioned that we don't know how these people feel. I think I've heard from everybody in this room, and I know they're all against it, so I mean...
I'm sorry, Counselor Zambudo, you misunderstood me. They have a right to know how we feel on the issue. It is clear how they feel.
Okay. So, speaking for myself, I think everybody knows how I feel. That's the way I should have phrased that. I apologize for speaking for my colleagues, but everybody knows how I feel on this issue, I'm sure. Anyways, that's why I was a little confused.
I don't know how you feel.
Excuse me. Excuse me. I will not be entertaining that from the audience. You guys have been awesome tonight. Please keep it that way. Thank you very much. So let's take the roll call. If we could just have some clarification on what exactly were the wording that we're voting on, just so we can all be clear. We've got to figure that out.
Mr. President, could I say something?
Counselor Argenzio?
Thank you. So, for the audience's sake, the City Council decided to place this on file. There's a ban on medical mari... excuse me, recreational marijuana dispensaries in Revere. By placing it on file, it's dead. We've kept the ban. The ban will continue as to such time that it may come back up again, and at that time it can be addressed again. By placing it on file, it is dead, and it's not... and the ban will still... is still in existence. Thank you.
I'd like to give the opportunity of the full City Council to vote on whether or not we should be placing this on file, or whether or not we should move forward tonight with a vote on whether or not the ban should be repealed.
So looking to... so you want the City Council to take, just take a vote instead of up or down, instead of placing it on file, before actually taking hypothetically a vote on...
Correct. And I'd also like to point out that, yes, it's true that this is placed on file in some respect. It is on hold until someone at such time revives it, and that could be at any time until December 31st, 2025. So I'd just like to make that clear.
Mr. President?
Counselor McKenna?
Could you... could the clerk just clarify what we...
She's working on it.
Okay.
So shall the City Council move to take a vote on engrossment and ordainment of the ordinance repealing the prohibition of non-medical marijuana establishments?
I'm sorry. I would like the full City Council an opportunity to vote on whether or not it should be placed on file, on whether or not that... what was placed on file in Subcommittee should continue to...
It hasn't been placed on file. The full City Council would need to take a vote in order to place that on file.
Okay, that vote will be happening.
Not unless a substitute motion that you make prevails.
I have no substitute motion. Then I would like a vote taken by the full City Council on placing it on file. That's it.
So there's no substitute motion?
No.
Then we have to take a roll call on placing it on file?
Correct.
Well...
Correct. That's what I want. Whichever way, we need to get that done, whether it be by minority report or regular procedure.
Well, the majority report of the committee was to place it on file.
Correct.
My...
I want a minority report to not place it on file.
Right, to either... so you wanted the City Council to take a vote on the ordinance, so to move for engrossment and ordainment of the ordinance. You always have to ask a question in the affirmative.
Mm-hmm. But I don't want this to be a vote yet on whether or not we're repealing the ban. I want to give people the opportunity to speak on that.
Madam Clerk, the motion on the floor is to place on file.
Yep.
You can vote yes or no.
Yep.
If you vote no, then it's not on file.
And it's also up to the will of the City Council. Again, the City Council is the judge and jury of its own rules. If the will of the City Council to allow people to speak, so be it. That's up to the City Council to decide.
So we're going to take a roll call on the recommendation the Legislative Subcommittee gave to the whole council, which is to place this on file. So if you want to place it on file, say yes. If you don't want to place it on file, say no. That... okay. Roll call.
Shall the City Council place on file an ordinance repealing the prohibition of non-medical marijuana establishments? Counselor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hermio is absent. Counselor Kelly?
No.
No, Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Novoselsky?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Zambudo?
No.
No, and Council President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes, this matter will be placed on file.
I'd like to put a motion on the floor, Mr. President.
What's your motion, Counselor?
I'd like to put a motion on the floor that if this matter ever be revived, or put... placed back on the agenda at any given point in time from now until December 31st, 2025, that a robo... a robo-call will be required to go out citywide to make the public aware of the day and time of the public hearing of said motion.
Point of parliamentary procedure... point of parliamentary procedure...
State your point, Counselor.
Through you, Mr. President, to the clerk. I don't believe a motion like that is in order, but tell me how that fits with our
I'm personally okay with that motion being put on the floor. I think it's a great motion. And I know that we want to place these on file, but I'm also openly stating that I would never bring this up, so...
Is that the purpose of this? So that... I think being on file means it's dead.
So basically, when you place something on file...
It's dead.
It's dead. But that doesn't help... yes, woo! But how... hold on. I just... this is for the edification of everybody here. When you... excuse me? Please? One moment, everybody. Thank you. When you place something on file, that essentially means that the council has discussed something and decided not to make any changes. We're not changing anything, nor are we hiding anything. When you tape... when you... excuse me. If we vote on it, then you could bring it up again anyway. And this is what I'm trying to tell you. So what Counselor Kelly is trying to do is make sure that even though this motion is placed on file, that we can not bring it up until the end of this legislative session, which, as she stated, was December 31st, 2025. Is that accurate, Counselor Kelly?
If someone does bring it up before December 31st, 2025, I would like a robo-call to go out, just advising the public of the...
No, no, no. Robo-call, not roll call. So...
There's no second is required on the City Council.
So Counselor Kelly, if you wouldn't mind just stating the motion one more time, and then I'd like to take a roll call on it.
Sure. If at any given time from now until December 31st, 2025, the motion on repealing the ban, the prohibition for recreational marijuana in the city of Revere is revived and placed on as an item on the agenda of the City Council, said item shall be notified, be on a robo-call so that the entire city is notified of the day and time of the hearing, of the public hearing.
Counselor, if I may, this may cost money. How would you feel about putting this into... excuse me.
I think it's money well spent.
Guys, please don't do that. It's our responsibility about money, and I'm just making sure that procedurally we do the right thing, because we have rules to follow, too. If this costs X amount of dollars, by law, it has to go into a Subcommittee. We can't just pass these things. So please, I understand that you don't understand, and I am more than willing to talk to you about any part of this.
I know that when robo-calls went out for other items that happened during the city, poppies, changing directions of traffic on streets and things like that, those robo-call decisions were not put in Subcommittee. They just kind of happened, and you know... so I don't know why... I don't know why rules apply in one occasion and not another. Maybe it is due to the sum of money. I don't know.
Just so you know, we wouldn't have the final say in something like this. It would go to the administration as well, to my understanding. So I'm trying to make sure that we have another avenue to have a conversation about this, because I agree, I'm voting yes on this. There's no question. So what is the will of the council? Roll call. Let's take a roll call on Counselor Kelly's motion.
Before the roll call, you talked about money. There's an ordinance on the books...
I know.
...that if anything costs more than $5,000, it's got to go for financial analysis. Now, I'm willing... I support the motion. However, I don't support changing our rules and changing our ordinances in order to create that. So the bottom line is, I'm sure a robo-call is going to cost more than $5,000 bucks. Do you want to break the rules to go that way? Fine, but I don't.
And that was my point earlier, is I want to make sure that we do follow the rules. Counselor Kelly, would you be agreeable to putting this in Subcommittee? Actually, the next legislative... I don't know if we'd be able to fit it into the next one. But I also understand that...
I believe it would be ways and means.
Oh. Okay. So Counselor Kelly, I'll leave the decision up to you. This is your motion.
I honestly don't know. I don't know if a robo-call would cost more than $5,000. Can anyone here actually guarantee that it would? I don't know. I mean, without knowing that, I don't know how I can vote. I don't know how I can recommend without knowing that.
I think that's part of the reason we need a financial analysis.
Just a point... a point of information. Point of information, Mr. President.
State your point.
A simple email to the chief financial officer will be able to tell us quickly. By the next meeting, we would know what the cost of this would be. And if it's under $5,000, then you just vote it in. Simple.
I think that's reasonable.
Move the table.
So this will be tabled until the next City Council meeting, which is November 4th,
The Parks and Recreation Subcommittee did not meet today.
Tabling's non-negotiable, unless somebody objects to it. Does anyone object to the tabling till the next meeting? Then there's no discussion, and there's no roll call needed. Thank you. Next order of business.
Counselor Cogliandro, before you move on, can we please present our signatures?
Absolutely. Ms. Catano, just please pass those to the clerk, and we're going to move on.
Thank you very much. So I'll give it to you in a second.
Ms. Catano, I said you could pass the signatures, and we're not taking speaking right this second. You can pass...
Okay. I just want to say that 2,119 residents of Revere have put their signature in here saying that they do not want retail marijuana, okay? So these people will be...
Thank you.
They'll just be watching what happens next. Thank you.
Next up is the Parks and Recreation Subcommittee Report. That meeting was canceled today and rescheduled for December 2nd at 5:30. Next up is the Zoning Subcommittee Report.
Oh, Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, because of what's happened in the Legislative Affairs Committee, this needs to be placed on file. So I would ask to place this on file.
Placed on file. Just so everyone knows, that is all the business of the recreational cannabis issue. Everything has been placed on file. There will not be recreational pot shops in the city of Revere. Five... Guys, excuse me, everyone. We're going to need ordering here. We have a meeting to conduct. Let's please clear the chambers. Clear the chambers. We have a meeting to conduct.
Excuse me. Can we clear the room, please? Can we clear the room so we can get started on other businesses? Thank you.
Please clear the chambers so we can resume the meeting. Please clear the chambers so we can resume the meeting. If you're staying for the meeting, please take a seat. If you're not, please exit out Let's resume the meeting. Madam Clerk.
Calendar item number 10, communication from 101 Wall Street and Walnut Street LLC, Robert Mahoney, requesting that the city council consider a proposed land swap of Austin Street, parcel number 34-467-F-22A for number 35 Morris Street, identified as parcel number
Is Mr. Mahoney or someone on his behalf here? Ms. O'Neil, name an address for the record, please.
Good evening, City Council President and City Councilors. My name is Nancy O'Neil. I'm an attorney located at 14 Proctor Avenue, and I'm here tonight on behalf of 101 Walnut Street LLC and its manager, Mr. Robert Mahoney, a city of Riviera resident, as to a potential land swap with the city of Riviera. Today, Mr. Mahoney's company, 101 Walnut Street LLC, owns some of the last privately held land in the city of Riviera's North Riviera Conservation Area. Specifically, this is an unnumbered parcel of approximately 7,800 square feet on an older street in North Riviera called Austin Street, which is surrounded by city-owned parcels, all of which are zoned as Conservation District. And what we are proposing here tonight is that Mr. Mahoney provide this Conservation Parcel to the city of Riviera in exchange for a small residentially zoned parcel in North Riviera that is adjacent to other land owned by Mr. Mahoney. And specifically, I am talking about the vacant lot of 35 Morris Street, an approximately 6,900 square foot parcel, which would be undersized for the RA1 district, but when combined with my client's adjacent property, which is a lot of approximately 15,000 square feet, would be of the proper size, and my client is interested in putting housing on that parcel. So, overall, this would be a win-win situation for the city. The city would be able to consolidate control over conservation land in North Riviera, and it would allow for low-density housing to be developed in a residential neighborhood. And we are happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Garino-Sawaya.
Hi. What is he planning on building?
Likely residential housing. That, that district is zoned for single and two families, so something of that nature.
Nothing more than that?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I talked to Frank Strangie, and he said that the swap, the land that he's given us is bigger. Is that true?
Yes, that is true. The parcel that would be given to the city is 7,800 square feet, give or take, and the parcel that we are seeking to have transferred to us is approximately 6,900 square feet.
And one more question. So, it's not gonna hurt, it's not abutting any conservation land or on top of any conservation land? I mean, we're talking about conservation land, you know? Little by little, by little by little, we're getting rid of our conservation land, and we can't do that. So, I was just wondering, is this, this would be considered conservation land?
The land that, that Mr. Mahoney owns today, that is conservation land, so that would be going towards the city. What we are seeking is a residentially zoned parcel surrounded by residentially zoned-
So, my question is, we couldn't use the parcel that he gave us to build?
No.
No, it would go into the conservation-
Correct.
-part of it. Okay, thank you.
Counselor, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Novoseltsky.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, you know, I've run into this before, and we've given, you know, done land swaps, but before we can authorize it through the council, we have to make sure that the city engineer and the DPW do not have any objections to it because it may be, there may be some kind of underground utilities going through it, and we just want to get that confirmed, that that is not the case. And we usually get it in writing from those two bodies before we can actually do the final authorization. So, I would ask that that be done.
This is going to a public hearing next, so we do have some time. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambuda.
Yeah, that was gonna be my point, that it is going to a public hearing, and obviously, we're gonna find out every, everything about these properties before we make this decision. We've done this. Those of us that have been here a long time, we've done a lot of these, and you got to be real careful, and we will be. And we've got a reputable gentleman here who's proposing this, but that doesn't mean we check all the facts, and we will. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Any other counselors? Let's go to a public hearing on November 25th.
Calendar item number 11, communication from the chief of police relative to the
Good evening, Chief. Name an address for the record, please.
Good evening. David Callahan, 400 Riviera Beach Parkway, city of Riviera. And I'm here tonight for a JAG grant that we usually come in for. Often, I get some handouts. I'll pass out to the council. Counselors, the clerks are gonna pass out just some basic information on the Byrne Grant. And we, it's an annual thing. We come up here every year for it. It is the Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistant Grant, which they, it's known as the JAG Grant. And this year, the police department's requesting a total of $17,757 in funding. Basically, the, the money's used to assist with investigations involving domestic violence-related matters, also some educational outreach, things that we do, and other community engagement that's all focused on domestic violence matters. And we work collaboratively with the Suffolk County DA's office and city officials, and also Habakov. Habakov is a local victim service agency that helps with victims of domestic violence and helps to assist them with alternate housing and things like that. And unfortunately, we see an uptick in domestic violence-related matters, and you know, we work a lot with Habakov, and they help us, and they see that these services are definitely warranted to help victims. Also, the money assists us with overtime to do other follow-up investigations that are in person, and other things we do, assisting victims go into court and things like that. But it all focuses on domestic violence. And some of the other money is gonna focus on doing community engagement in various other non-enforcement activities and community outreach, like some of the events of the Student Boxing Club, Citizens Police Academy, National Night Out, Walkin' Roots, and some other community and school events, and other outreach that the police department ordinarily does in the community. So, and there's some other things, some of the services with the funds by paraphernalia and things like that that we need to conduct these events. So, I don't know if anybody has any specific questions? Yes?
Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Did you, I know Jerry Salvati was the person that used to go to the schools. Did you get someone to do that?
Yeah, we have resource offices-
Okay.
-additional ones. We have three that are currently in the schools now. We added a fourth to assist-
So, they go and talk to the kids about certain things?
Yeah, they do engagement with the youth, especially at the high school and the middle school. And then if there's other things that need to do in the lower grades, they'll do that as well.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, thanks so much for being here. Is the PALS Basketball League, is that included in the?
Some of it. Yeah, it helps. We don't have the funding we used to have for the Police Athletic League, but it's, some of the money will help with that. And also, we have another grant that helps us, the Shannon Grant, and that's another state grant that we also use in that adds supplemental monies for, you know, the Police Athletic League.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate you being here tonight. This is gonna be placed on file. Unless there's any other questions? There's no vote to be taken. Place on file.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chief. Have a good night.
My apologies for being late for a moment. No, I think I'm up for another matter as well. I'll see you in a moment. Thank you.
Calendar item number 12, communication from the Assistant Water and Source Superintendent relative to an update on lead services.
Good evening, sir. Name an address for the record, please.
Good evening, Council. Chris Charamella, 319 Charger Street. I'm the superintendent of Public Works. I just wanted to introduce you all to Anthony Glizia, the Assistant Superintendent of Public Works. I'm sorry, Assistant Superintendent of the Water Department.
Whoa.
I just want to express my gratitude for his and all their work, the Water Department, for removing lead services in the past two months. Anthony just has a quick briefing on what they have accomplished, and let you guys all know what will be coming out in the next couple of weeks.
Thank you, sir.
Yep. So, I'm here to speak to the city's efforts in removing lead services from our water inventory. And just to catch everybody up on speed where this came from, there's been changes to federal legislation that have trickled down to the state level and then through the city and town level. So, this is a nationwide issue that's really being addressed. The changes are to the lead and copper rule, through the lead and copper rule revisions, which now require cities and towns to update a mandatory, a mandatory inventory update of the material of service lines in the city. So, the classifications are copper lines, lead lines, unknown service material lines, and galvanized lines. To remain in compliance, the city has completed their inventory. It got submitted October 15th, and the update that we have is that there are 50, 578 unknown lines and 461 lead lines out of the over 10,000 services that we have. So, our goal is, the LCRR goals are to replace them at a 7% rate, a minimum of a 7% rate, until all of the lead is out of the city. And that's something that we've been really strongly committed to. As Chris mentioned, I'm also extremely proud of the work that the Water Department has done. In the last three months, we've performed over 200 excavations in a really short period of time, just to get a better handle on our inventory and figure out what we have under the ground here. Of those 200 excavations, our own Water Department replaced 22 lead service lines, and we also had contractors, various contractors work in the city to replace another 28 service lines. So, since last November, we've replaced 80 service lines.
I heard you did that in pretty much record time, too.
It was fast.
It's okay. You can brag a little bit if you-
It just, our guys worked really hard to do it, and the contractors were a great help as well, and also our Highway Department to follow us around, make sure that we pave these trenches and get the streets looking the way that they should. And all of those replacements are at no cost to the homeowners. And that's the goal here, is to do this for free to people so they have clean drinking water. We've pretty much wrapped up for the end of this year, and we're gonna continue this next year. So, I just wanted to relay to the council what our plan is for residents, because we imagine there's gonna be a lot of questions. So, on our website now, we have a interactive map that's on our homepage right now, where all residents can enter their address, and it brings up a map of the city, brings them to their parcel. They can click that parcel, and it shows the record on their, on their water line. So, it will say copper, unknown, lead, whatever that may be. Today, notifications have been mailed out to all of the residents that have unknown and lead service lines. So, they'll be receiving notification likely this week. And any questions that they may have, they can contact myself, they can contact the City 311, City Hall. Everyone's aware of what they should, of what they should tell our residents. So, I'd just like to also open the floor to the council if they have any questions.
Thank you very much.
If I could also, because you, we need them to brag a little bit more, and so I think the boss will help brag for them, and I, honorable body, Mr. President, and of course, I know that Counselor Agenzio knows us very intimately. The work that they did over the last just few months was incredible. We sat down with the MWRA less than two months ago, and we told them what we had left to do before the deadline of October 31st. They almost laughed at us. They didn't think it was gonna be attainable, and Chris and Anthony and his team stood across the table and said, "We're gonna get it done." And they didn't just get it done by October 31st. They finished last week. But that was due to the hard work of the entire team, working 12-hour shifts. There were people working two to three 12-hour shifts a week in the Water and Sewer Department, and also, as mentioned, in the Highway Department that were helping fill these trenches. So, it was an entirely collaborative effort by our entire team over at the Department of Public Works. So, I just, I can't thank them enough for what they've done. I know that this sometimes is a disruption to our residents, but as mentioned, this is at no cost to our residents, and it's making sure to, not only to provide clean drinking water, it's also making sure to check that they have the right lines in their system. So, when Anthony mentions unknowns, that doesn't always mean they have lead. It's just, we just don't know. Sometimes people build houses, even in the 80s and 90s, and just didn't mark it properly. So, we have to do a trench dig and to check and to see what's there, even knowing more than likely it is not lead. But they're doing their due diligence and taking care of our residents. So, I can't thank them enough and their team for what they've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. Anthony, thank you for all the work that you've done, especially on Winterbev, and I know you guys are trying to get that done so we can pave it. It's, it's a mess, but a couple of residents have called me, and there's still spaces that are open. They're not done yet. Do you know when that's gonna get done?
So, Counselor, to answer your question, the Highway Department is now working down Proctor Ave, and will be moving down to Winterbev after that. Also, to update you on the paving, because I figured this question might come up, the week of the 4th, November 4th, we will start milling Oxford Howard Rand McLeavy. The week after that will be final paving of that area, and then we will be moving along to Winterbev.
Okay. So, I need, I need, since we're talking about Winterbev, I really need, because I was gonna ask the mayor, I have a meeting with the mayor Wednesday, so I was going to ask the mayor, say- to ask the mayor the same thing. And I know you and I have walked Winterbev together, and is Webster and Summer Street getting paved along with Winterbev?
That was not included initially in the scope of work, but we can have that conversation and see if we can add it.
Okay, because they really, from the heavy construction trucks, they've really done damage to those two streets, and they're very, very short streets. I think there are two or three houses on them. So it would just be from Winterbev to Crescent Ave, Summer, and Webster.
Okay.
And one more thing, sorry, while we're on the subject, I know, I'm a paid. Phillips Ave, too. That's a dead-end street that really needs to be paved. It was sinking. People couldn't drive down there. Residents couldn't walk down there. I was just wondering if that had a timeline.
That would be spring, Phillips. That's just final, so that was temporary trench paving after the sewer line, and now final paving will be coming in the spring.
Thank you very much, guys.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Garino-Sawai.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chris and Anthony, I have to tell you, not only did you do it in record time, but I was informed, and that's a plus. When you keep the counselor informed, you keep the neighborhood happily. And I'm really, really thankful that you did keep me up to date with everything that was going on in Ward 5. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Gentlemen, thank you very much. Chris, I remember you came up when the letters went out originally, and I think there was a little bit of misunderstanding. So if the lead service was on the resident's side, we might not have done it. And if it was on the city's side, we were going to, is that still the case?
So the letters that initially came out, just to keep everyone aware, we were part of a pilot program, being in MWA community, to test out the future processes of this now enacted rule. So the letters are going out, these current letters that we just sent out today, will be stating both material of private and public side.
Okay.
And the city is, again, picking up the costs for both private and public side, which majority of the communities require homeowners to pay for the private side of the service.
And how do we get that out to our residents, our seniors, English with the second language, that to not get caught up in a scam where they're paying for their service and an understanding, well, you may have to get this done because you have a service, and them not understanding that the city's going to take care of it?
So only people receiving letters are receiving letters because they either have a known lead, public or private side, or unknown service? Anyone else that is worried that they're not receiving a letter, that is because we have documentation that their service is not lead, and they have no reason to be contacted?
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nowoselski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chris, first of all, congratulations on your wedding, your recent marriage. So when talking private and city, we're talking up to the meter as far as replacing that copper line?
So the public side, the city-owned portion of the utility, is from the water main to the curb stop, and the resident-owned portion is from the curb stop to the water meter.
Okay, so are we replacing it up to the water meter?
Yeah, the entire line. Yep, the entire line.
I just want to double-check that. But I wanted, I wasn't notified of any of what was being done down in Ward 2. But I, there's a couple cuts at 122 Campbell Ave, one on the street and one on the sidewalk. And I don't know if that was from you or from National Grid, and it hasn't been resurfaced. So if you can check that out. And hopefully, on the sidewalk ones, those are fairly new sidewalks, we would hope that concrete goes back where that square was cut up. So if you can check out 122 Campbell Ave.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Allseth, my apologies.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselors Ambroo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to give a couple of kudos here, and I'm proud of the way this is being done. Now, I know we had a little mishap with that original letter that went out, where there's a little confusion and so forth. But it makes me proud to be a city councilor, number one, that we're paying for the homeowner's side of the lead pipes. It shows our commitment to removing lead from the system. And it makes, I guess, kudos go to the administration for approving this and everybody along the line, from the superintendent all the way up and down. And I just thank you for your efforts and proud that we're, we look real good here. And it, sometimes we don't look good, and it makes me, it really disappoints me, but this is one of the times I can say in 25 years, I'm very proud and happy to be sitting up here and listening to this. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Thank you all for being here. This is going to be placed on file.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Calendar item number 13, Communication from the Chief of Planning and Community Development, Presenting the City's Policy and Procedure for Implementing Traffic Calming Measures.
Good evening, counselors. Tom Skarowski, Chief of Planning and Community Development, 281 Broadway. I'm here tonight to talk about a new internal policy that was developed between my department, the City of Revere Police Department, Fire Department, Engineering, and DPW, taking a look at how we take in traffic calming petitions and evaluate their effectiveness and implement new traffic calming programs. I know, I don't believe on tonight's council agenda, but many council agendas over the last few years, we've been seeing a lot of traffic calming petitions, things like road diets, speed humps, route restrictions, things of that nature. And we wanted to just create a really clear and a streamlined process by which we take those in. We use data to determine which strategies would be taken on and basically implement a clear system by which all this gets approved. So what you have in front of you is that policy. I'm not necessarily asking for an endorsement of the council, it's not an ordinance or anything like that. It's really just an internal way that we'll be doing business moving forward. But just to give you some of the highlights, so we set a series of strategies within our traffic calming toolbox. Horizontal deflection, which is, you know, sort of like a speed bump where you're slowing traffic by going up. Vertical deflection, road diets and route restrictions. We have those four different categories, and amongst those four categories, a variety of different strategies within them. And with each and every strategy that we have in our traffic calming toolkit, we now have a set of design standards that go along with them. Those design standards include, for example, with a speed hump, where you shouldn't, shouldn't put them in terms of a roadway with a very high grade, where you might have issues in the wintertime when a plow is going up or a car is going up, and they get stalled by the speed hump and can't make it up the street. It has specific design standards for emergency vehicles, it has estimated costs, and it's all taken from the IT Traffic Calming Toolkit. So it's sort of standardized and national, and provides some really clear criteria for what we should be looking at in terms of various tools to support traffic calming. We also have a list of criteria, both a minimum criteria and a priority criteria when we're looking at these various tools. So first of all, the minimum criteria are those things that would need to be met in order for a petition to be acted on by the city. Those minimum criteria include speed. So are cars actually speeding on the roadway? The generally accepted definition for that is that the 85th percentile, the vast majority of cars are not speeding or are, depending on the definition. Of volume, are 800 vehicles at least traveling on this roadway? So we don't want to implement traffic calming on a road that nobody's using. Is there actually a lot of support behind a petition? So if it has 10 or more residents within a street signing onto it, that's another set of minimum criteria that must be met. And is there actually a real verifiable engineering solution for this particular problem? So those are sort of the minimum criteria that need to be met, as well as street width. And then we also set a series of prioritization criteria. So if we have two petitions in front of us, but only one pot of money, we can't implement both of them, all else equal, which are we going to choose? We have prioritization criteria that says, basically, if not only are cars speeding, but they're going particularly fast in this roadway, it receives extra points. If the adjacent land use is a public space, a senior center, affordable housing, a building of worship, it receives an additional point. If this street is adjacent to upcoming roadway improvements, it receives additional points, because if we're already ripping off a road, it's easier to put a speed hump in as part of that traffic program. And then equal distribution is the last. We want to make sure that we're having these traffic calming petitions being distributed throughout all the wards in the city, not just concentrated in one particular neighborhood. So again, that's how we would, all else equal, grade which projects get funded today and which ones might be placed on the capital needs plan for future years of funding. And then, along with the prioritization criteria, we created just a clear process, and there's a flow chart in the guide. And the guide, for those of you that can't see in front of you tonight, will be on the City of Revere's webpage. There'll actually be a specific page called Traffic Calming Strategies and Traffic Calming Policy. You can click on that right on the drop-down menu under Community Development. And it outlines a clear sort of process by which this all happens, and it would still start with the ward counselors. It just would start with a formal petition that we've created for traffic calming strategies in particular. If the petition's approved by the city council, then it goes to a traffic working group for review. That includes members of my department, the Police Department, the Fire Department, the Parking Department, Engineering and DPW, where we'll take a look at the particular strategy being proposed, we'll grade it according to the criteria. If it meets the minimum criteria, then it will move on to the next stage, where we'll propose a solution based on all the tools in our toolbox. If there's funding available for the project, we'll start designing that solution and working towards implementation. If there's not funding available for that project, we'll put it on the capital needs budget for the next year, and hopefully, the council could approve additional funding for such strategies in the future. And then we'll bring it in front of the Traffic Commission once we have a full design. If the Traffic Commission approves it, then we will move on to implementation. So that's it in a nutshell. I know we've got a lot of business in front of us tonight, so I don't want to overload you, but I'm happy to take any questions you might have about the policy.
Thank you, Tom. Counselor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom, thank you very much. This is actually awesome. I gotta say this. It's even better that it starts with the ward counselors. But I think this is great, because, you know, everyone believes that their street's most important and their neighborhood deserves the most, but this is going to give us a clear-cut understanding of actually which roads are being mostly driven on, which ones are speeding the most, and a clear understanding for us to have answers when someone says, "Well, why did a speed bump go on this street and not mine?" Well, now we have data to prove why that was, when before it was just kind of, we didn't have answers to those questions. So, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nowoselski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom, thank you. This is great. There's a lot of questions I have. I know we've met already on some of the locations, but what happens if we, the council, pass something, and we're getting it from people on the street, you know, the residents? They're flying up our streets, and you guys say, "No, you can't do it." What do we tell them?
Well, I think we've faced that with a few different petitions that have come in front of the council, and that's part of the reason why we wanted to create a clear set of criteria that would basically explain why the petition's not being accepted. So I think what I would tell them in that instance is we...
Call you?
I mean, yes, honestly. In this case, I think that would be warranted.
Careful what you wish for, Mr. Skarowski.
Hey, I didn't wish for it, but if he's asking, I mean, that's our job. And quite honestly, we want to create a data-informed policy, so we're not just saying, "We don't think it should go there because it just doesn't feel right." Now we can say, "Well, the 85th percentile speed is going below the speed limit, which means the vast majority of people are not speeding, so a traffic calming strategy's not warranted." Or in another instance, we saw, sure, a few cars might be speeding, but there's 500 cars a day on this roadway, and we don't have enough funding to support something like that versus a street where people are cutting through all day long, and we have 10,000 cars on the roadway. We got to make those difficult decisions, and hopefully, this gives us a little bit more data to help inform those difficult decisions.
Because, you know, I can just bring up specifically Campbell Ave. We put a speed hump on Campbell, which I've been yelling for, for 10 years, and we finally got it last year. But now, that's in one spot. But now, leading up to that, people are flying up the street, and I'm getting complaints from the people down at the lower end of the street. Are we open to put another speed bump on that street?
I think, I would encourage you to work with the resident to submit a petition of that effect, but...
And I definitely will.
But what I would say generally with speed humps, I think we should be moving towards a strategy where they're not just isolated, but they're part of a broader system within the traffic network. So, you know, on one street, you might have multiple speed humps, so you're really slowing traffic for the duration of the road, not just for that small portion that has a hump. And then, on the other side of things, we want to consider other streets within that roadway network. So if we have a speed bump here, and then a car just diverts and goes down another road and is speeding down that road, it's like a game of whack-a-mole, right? We're not really solving the problem.
Because I have, just recently, I've had at least a dozen phone calls on Franklin Avenue, going from Hitchborne Street down to Walnut Ave. They come off the highway, flying off the highway, and taking the turn from Hitchborne Street on to Franklin. And people have been screaming, "My phone is ringing off the hook," because of that particular street, which I will be putting in, you know, and now, and that's a long street. The people, I've already had it for two locations on that, in that particular street. I don't know what the feeling is for two, but maybe, and I know it all depends on driveways and street corners and stuff like that, so, but, you know, I'm just telling you, people are flying on every street, not, you know, I'm just talking about my street, and I'm sure everybody up here could tell you, they are flying, and it's not five miles an hour over the limit. It's 15 to 20 to 25 miles over the limit. And one guy said 85 miles he was going on Franklin Ave today, and he almost got hit in his car. So, but I'm just telling you what's going on, and we got to do something logically and for the people.
Agreed. And what I will say is, if you send people in my direction for me to explain why we can't fund a particular project, maybe it doesn't meet the minimum criteria, just know I might send them in your direction or the councils generally, if we don't have enough money to implement all the traffic calming petitions that are coming down the pipeline, because this all does cost money, both to design it the right way, to implement it the right way. And I don't want to be penny-wise and pound-foolish in how we do this. If we're going to do it, we should do it right, but it costs money.
Right. And I can understand that, and I saw the costs for speed bump, or depending on flow of water and, you know, stuff like that. But, you know, we have to do something, and, you know, and actually, you know, I am pleading to you for this, but I also plead to the chief to get more directed patrols in some of these side streets and catch these people. It's ridiculous. The lower end of Campbell Ave, we're going down to the parkway, we've had 15 different accidents over the five, last five years. 15 accidents, and we've damaged at least 32 cars parked on the side. So something has to be done, and, you know, I know my people want it, and they want to hear from me, and I'm throwing it right at you, and I'm throwing it at the chief also. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Janino.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Julie, for all the work and effort you put into this here. I like the way it looks. I do one question as far as the surveys. Will they be done in-house, or are they going to be put out to other companies?
So for, for the time being, at least, the speed and volume surveys, those will be done in-house by Revere PD.
Is that the equipment we have now? Is it the equipment we have now?
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom, thanks so much. Following up on Counselor Janino's question, will the petitions be available online if someone registers with, an account? Can they fill this out online in some, in some way?
They can fill it out online, and they'll be encouraged to work with their ward counselor to actually formally submit the petition. But since I mentioned it a few times now, you go to the drop-down menu, I had to go online to see it myself. It's not live today, but it'll be live this week under Business and Development, and then, I believe, Projects and Planning Initiatives, and it will be right underneath Revere Municipal Aggregation Plan. Again, it's not there today, but the page will be live later this week.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor McKenna.
Thank you. Mr. President, this has really nothing to do with calming, but I was just wondering, would you be in favor of do not block the box, because we need them in certain areas like Crescent Ave to go into Bennington Street to try to get out of, you know? So I was just wondering if you are in agreement with that? And it could be something that we use in the future. that we use in the future.
Absolutely, and it's certainly something, as the Better Bus Network redesign and Broadway is going to be going live later this December, we're working with the MBTA and actually putting a Don't Block the Box pavement markings right at Broadway and Central, because that's another big offender for that. And I think if, we should be locating those areas and identifying them and using that strategy to make, make sure people are aware, even though it's already law and everybody should know it, those particular areas of concern.
So if I have some areas in my ward that need to have something like that, do I contact you?
You can contact my office, and, you know, one thing I neglected to mention is, we have a traffic commission, right, that meets every month to actually vote on laws that are subject to Title 10 in the ordinance related to traffic. But we now have a working group that meets every month as well, and that's more of a working on the ground, handling a lot of these complaints and concerns and working towards solutions. So not just this traffic calming petition, but you might have seen online now there's an improved process by which we handle construction notices. And another thing we've mentioned at previous council meetings, it was that working group and the folks within it, chiefly Chris Charamella and Rosie in the mayor's office, who all put that together. But, but yeah, we're, I, I can be the clearinghouse, but by no means will I be the one doing all the work. It's really the traffic working group putting the work in.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Argenzio.
I'm all set, Mr. President. Counselor Gino, ask my question.
Thank you very much. Counselor Garino Sawaya.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Tom. Thank you, Julie, for all the work you've done on this. What do I do in the situation in Ward Five? Ward Five is not just Revere, it's DCR, DOT, and I get constant, constant phone calls that they want traffic calming measures on Revere Beach, they want traffic calming measures on North Shore Road. What would be the process that I would follow?
That's a great question. So, I, I think this policy really applies to all the roads within the City of Revere's jurisdiction, and we do have a lot of state-owned roads, both DCR and MasDOT, that are just not within our control. So I think you, prior to perhaps submitting a petition in an area where you're questioning something like that, you might just want to reach out to myself or Julie just to get some clarification on jurisdictions of the roadway. And then, if our answer is, we can't handle it, then we could, and I know the mayor's office is great about this too, connecting you with folks whether at DCR or at DOT that can get some answers for you.
Thank you. I find it really difficult to try to get ahold of MasDOT or DCR to try to get some work done. The City of Revere usually responds immediately, but as far as, you know, I, I think we need to establish some type of a relationship with both those entities so I can get a faster answer, because I've get, I get phone calls on the daily, especially in front of the Jack Sata House. They were asking for a speed bump for a long time, and I haven't been able to make that come into fruition yet. Thank you.
I'm, I'm getting a look from Julie, which means she might have something to say here.
Name and address, ma'am.
Julie Demaro, Department of Planning, Community Development, 281 Broadway. What we can do in those instances is we can reach out to our District Four reps from MasDOT. I can find out who is now in charge of the DCR roadway. The person that was there is no longer there. Obviously, there's been some movement here in the DCR, and different people are handling different things now. So I think for anything that is MasDOT-related, we can reach out to the District Four office. If you want to send us what you have so far, exact locations, and we can definitely send that to MasDOT. I will say this, anything that MasDOT does takes quite a bit of time, so, but we can at least get the process going, we can talk to them directly about what the next steps would be. They've been very respondent and very quick to handle anything that's related to signal timing, especially in North Shore Road and Revere Street. They're very, anytime we have an issue with that light, they're out there. So I think that they are pretty receptive, but anything related to any changes to the infrastructure of the roadway will take a little bit longer, but happy to, happy to forward those along for you.
Thank you, Counselor. Permission to speak from the chair? Thank you all. I think it's a very important point, what Counselor Garino Sawaya just said, and I don't know if everybody in the city understands that we are riddled with state-run roads. Broadway is a state road. Squier Road is a state road, so it's good to know that we can contact you guys. I, I also had luck contacting our state representatives as well. Representative Janino and Representative Turco are fantastic. I just want to say, since Counselor Nowoselski was throwing some streets out there, been trying to get Mountain Ave and Proctor Ave done since I got elected on this council. So if we could somehow give those priority, because we've been asking since 2022 to have those done. I know that there's something in the books, but I would like it to happen sooner than later. Those two streets specifically are long, they're wide, and they're raceways right now. Not to diminish the problems on other streets, but I have to advocate for Ward Three. Sorry, Counselor. But thank you very much. Anything else, Tom?
That's all. I appreciate it.
Place on file.
Councilor item number 14, communication from the mayor relative to the water and soar rate stabilization appropriation.
Anyone have any questions?
Just up here if you have any questions, but I think you got the communications from our auditor. Correct? We, we let, we let the auditor take a couple days off, so I'm speaking for him.
If there's no questions from the council, we will take a roll call.
Shall the city council approve an appropriation from the Water and Source Stabilization Fund to the Water and Source Enterprise Fund, the amount of $2 million? Counselor Argenzio.
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Hermio is absent. Counselor Kelly is absent. Counselor McKenna?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nowoselski?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Zambudo?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes. The appropriation has been approved. Councilor item number 15, communication from the city auditor relative to the Public Employee Commission PEC Agreement, health insurance coverage covering the period of FY '25 through FY '34.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Honorable counsel, I'm here with good news. The PEC, as everyone knows, is a commission made up of representatives from each union that works in our city. So you have police, fire, teachers, administrators, local 22 AFSMI, the whole gamut that represents our community, meets in this health commission, talks about our health insurance rates and what that's going to look like for three, six, for however many years. We were able to work in harmony with all of the unions, bringing up recommendations on how to long-term plan when it comes to our health insurance. As you know, it, it's, it's constantly evolving, and we do know we want to have protections built in for our employees, but also protections built in for the city. So we were able to reach a nine-year agreement. This won't, this is going to give us the ability to plan out finances when it comes to health insurance for the next nine years. As you know, we do have some things coming up in the pipeline, so it's really nice to know what we're going to be planning for. And, and we came into a really nice agreement, again, that was offered up for a nine-year term. This affects all of you, if you, if you are able to benefit from the city's health insurance, and any retirees as well. So it's a really good deal, and we were happy to come to that, to this agreement.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before any counselor speak, I just need permission to read something that Captain Kevin O'Hara sent to me on behalf, oh, Counselor Cor- So I just want to read into the record, the president of the firefighter's union and captain of the fire department, Kevin O'Hara, sent. He says, "We are in favor of the PEC agreement. We negotiated it to help better the City of Revere. It's a small give-back from a union standpoint, but we understand what the important issues are in the city. All the union have worked together with the mayor and collectively bargained in good faith." Thank you.
I, I would like to add to that and just say that he had a family emergency, so he couldn't be up here to speak. Thank you.
Correct.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Zambudo.
I just want to congratulate the mayor on a job well done.
Madam clerk, we'll take the roll call.
Shall the city council approve a memorandum of agreement between the City of Revere and the Public Employee Committee, covering the period of July 1/24 through June 30/33? Counselor Argenzio?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Janino?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Garino Sawaya?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Haas?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Nowoselski?
Yes.
Yes. Counselor Silvestri?
Yes.
Yes. And Council President Cogliandro?
Yes.
Yes. The memorandum of agreement has been approved. Councilor item number 16, motion presented by counselors Cogliandro, Garino Sawaya, McKenna, and Silvestri, that the city council requests the city solicitor to draft special legislation providing for four-year terms of office for city council and school committee, beginning in the municipal election to take place in '27.
Mr. President, I have to recuse myself from the special legislation.
Counselor Haas is recused. Counselor Garino Sawaya.
Thank you, Mr. President. Since the day I got elected, the first thing I said is, "Why do we have two-year terms?" When you're elected to serve the people, two-year terms is nothing. The first year, you're working. The second year, what are you doing? You're sitting there trying to campaign all over again. I can't do what I have to do for everybody, for all my constituents, in two years. I need four years. And what I would like to do is put it in conjunction with the mayoral election. So when the mayor gets elected for four-year terms, I think the counselors should do that as well. And that's why I had put in this motion with council president and my two fellow counselors. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Permission to speak from the chair? So I made some notes here, just why I wanted to put this forward. Some of the reasoning behind it, first would be increased stability. Longer terms can leave, lead to more stability in governance, allowing council members to focus on long-term projects and policies without the constant pressure of reelection. I think Counselor Garino Sawaya said that. Four-year terms can foster greater continuity in leadership, reduce campaign costs, candidates can save money and time on campaigning, improve policy development. City council members have more time to understand issues and develop comprehensive policies rather than spending significant time preparing for upcoming elections. Stronger relationships can be built among council members and with constituents, that's the most important part, leading to more effective collaboration and communication. Greater accountability. With more time to execute the ideas they have, council members may feel more accountable for their decisions and performance over longer periods of time. Longer terms can reduce voter fatigue from frequent elections, and I think everybody in this city understands what I mean when we say voter fatigue. There's been so many special elections. Time and cost efficiency. Aligning city elections will lead to less cost for the city. Longer terms can give council members the necessary time to tackle issues and ongoing issues within the interruption of regular, without the interruptions of regular electoral cycles. So that's really, those are the points that I wanted to make about this, and I also want to state that our, our fellow elected officials in the school committee have reached out in favor of this as well. I know this is going to take a lot of work to get done. This does not, this starts here, by no means finishes here. It has to go here, it has to go to the mayor, it has to go to the state house or the House of Representatives, and then to the senate. So it's a long process, and the recommendation would be that this aligns with the mayoral races to give everybody a break, essentially. With that said, open the floor to any other counselors wishing to speak on the issue. Good evening, sir. Oh, sorry, Counselor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I don't mind having this discussion. I'm, I'm one who's not in favor of a four-year term. I might consider being in favor of a three-year term, but I think not many cities have a four-year term for city counselors, and I think there's a reason behind that, but that's for a later discussion, and I, I certainly enjoy, will enjoy having this debate as to what way we move forward on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. What's the will? Should we put this into subcommittee while we wait for that letter from the solicitor? Uh, yeah, I'm sorry. Name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Anthony Cantino, and I live at 240 Suffolk Avenue. Excuse me, President, if I'm wrong, but I understand you missed a step. When Counselor Kelly brought up her motion, and everybody discussed it, you missed a step. Whether anybody in the audience has anything to say about it? You all agreed that it wasn't proper to bring it up, because it's already been passed by the city council, okay?
It wasn't passed.
So you people pacify her and put her back on the agenda, and the issue will be brought back again on the-
That's not what's going to happen.
All right, we're off, we're off topic here.
Thank you. Stay, stay on, stay on topic for the motion.
Let me say what I-
Stay on, stay on topic for the motion, or you're going to be-
Let me say what I-
Mr. Cantino, have a seat. You're, you're done.
Let me say what I-
Absolutely not. You're going to have a seat. Yes, you're going to have a seat, or you're going to be asked to leave. Mr. Cantino, this is your last warning. Okay, Mr. Cantino, you are to be removed from the chambers. Mr. Cantino, please leave the chambers. Mr. Cantino, please leave the chambers. Officer, I'm sorry. Thank you, if you don't mind.
Name and address for the record.
This is Olga. I live Glendale Street, and I wrote my statement.
Is this a statement in regard to the motion that we're discussing?
Yes. Four-year terms.
Four-year terms, yes, ma'am. I'm just making sure we're going to stay on topic. Sorry about the theatrics, everybody. Ma'am, please continue. Yes.
Thank you. It's short, so thank you. Good evening, city council members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm here to express my opposition to extending terms length for our elected officials and the school committee members to four years. I believe the longer terms could reduce accountability and create a gap between our representatives and community. With shorter terms, officials are regularly encouraged to stay connected to the people they serve and address the community's changes, changing needs. In particular, our school, our school needs, need leaders who are responsive and adaptable to the involving challenges students and families face. By keeping terms shorter, we ensure the school committee members and elected officials remain accountable and aligned with the priorities of the community they represent. Please consider this important keeping for the two-year terms. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Good evening. Name and address for the record, ma'am.
Good evening, counselors. Viviana Catano, Mountain Avenue. So first of all, I would like to start by saying, I really respect what you all do, whether I agree or disagree with you all on whatever topic or issue you're talking to. I respect you for having the courage to run, to be elected, to be a voice, and to oftentimes sit in the hot seat, right? But I'm speaking today in opposition to extending the two-year terms, and I'm really glad that this wasn't the agenda tonight, so that, you know, we heard about it early and can nip it in the bud, and it doesn't have to go through a whole community scandal, and people are open in knowing that this is happening. And so I also believe that it's important for checks and balances for the mayor. I know that we moved that to four, but I think for checks and balances, it's important that the council stay as a two-year term. I think it's important for counselors to remember that we elect you to represent us and represent our voice, and I think it keeps you on your toes if you do have to be reelected and represent our voice, and I think it keeps you on your toes if you do have to be reelected every two years. I know some of you have been here for a long time, councillor Zambudo, councillor Ira, Joanne McKenna, and so if the people like what you're doing, they're going to keep voting for you, and you're going to stay here. So I don't think there's any reason to officially extend the term from two to four years. If people like how you're voting, you're going to be here. But if people don't like what you're doing, I think it's a good reminder that we elect you to be our representatives, that when we call upon you, when we show up in numbers, we want you guys to really consider us as your constituents. Thank you so much. I'm going to have to sneak in something very quickly. I just want to give Ashley...
As long as it's on topic. If you need to give the clerk something, you can, you can do so on the side if you want, if it's not on topic with this motion, ma'am.
Okay. I just wanted to pass in more, there's just a few more things.
Just step, step right over there, and the clerk will take the signatures from you, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, ma'am. Name an address for the record, please.
My first time here. Gisela Rosco, Beachland Avenue. I don't think this is appropriate, especially at this time, when we don't feel represented for many of you that we vote. So I don't think that will serve our community to have a stock for years with people that we don't like to be represented. So I think that should be kept in two years, and we go from there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So to my understanding, the solicitor, unless we vote on it, the solicitor won't draft the letter unless it's voted favorably. So do we want to vote on it? Do we want to put it into a subcommittee? What is the will?
Are we asking for an opinion from the solicitor? Is that what we're asking for?
We're asking for the solicitor to draw up the special legislation and word it correctly so that we can send it up to the house.
I'd like to, I'd like to recommend that we, I'd like to put a substitute motion that we ask for his opinion on how to go about this, if we were to go for a three- or four-year term. I think his opinion might be a better thing to ask for at this point than to flat-out ask him to draw up the legislation.
We have a substitute motion on the floor. Just give the clerk a minute to jot it down, and then we'll take a roll call on it.
Counselor, you want an opinion from the city council on whether a three- or four-year term would be more...
Or in general, whether, whether this is the right way to go about changing the terms of the council. And then from that point, whatever his opinion states, then we can draft, if we want to do, we can draft special legislation, but...
It would need to be special legislation.
I understand that, but this is putting the cart before the horse because we're not even sure everybody's in favor of four-year terms.
Right.
So I think we've got to, we've got to sort that out first, and then, so I think an opinion is more appropriate at this point. It's only my opinion.
Absolutely. I agree with you. Yes, ma'am. Please step up to the microphone. Good evening, ma'am. Name an address, please.
Good evening. My name is Christine Robertson, 187 Charger Street. I'm just listening to this conversation, and I'm wondering, where it's actually trying, trying to change the charter of the city? Would this not become a ballot question at some point?
It doesn't have to be. I, I would be a hundred, listen, we file motions, and we look forward to public comment. I look forward to that. On these, these are just ideas that we put forward. So I'm in favor of a ballot question, I'm in favor of doing whatever the proper procedure is. A ballot question would probably be great, but I would want that to line up with the next municipal election to save money for the city. I don't want, you know, a special election, but, you know, we're 11 people up here, we need to hear from all of you, as we did earlier, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we're going to just wait for the substitute motion, we'll take a vote, and we'll move forward.
What I drafted is that the city council requests an opinion from the city solicitor on whether a three- or a four-year term would be, for the city council, would be appropriate, and to bring, I mean, I, I'm sorry, I just need more, like, further clarification, like that, what are you, are you asking for an opinion on whether or not the city should adopt, or how to adopt said legislation, or...
So let me put it this way. We're asking for an opinion on the potential of drafting special legislation for an extended term for the city council, whatever that might be, and the procedure, his recommendation for how we go about that, if, if we should want to go about it after we see his opinion. Is that good enough? Huh? Okay. Help me sort it out.
Why don't we place this on file and put this on the ballot? We don't need, but we don't know that, so we need to get a legal opinion, right? I mean, this is getting, you know, this is...
It's getting a little crazy, but I mean, just... Well, unless the council as a whole wants to develop the idea of going forward with a four-year term, then you're going to ask the city solicitor to help draft it. But I don't think we're there, and that's why I put this motion in, so.
Typically, with a home rule petition, either the city council or the administration would submit the home rule petition to the city council. The city council would then need to approve any potential special legislation with a two-thirds vote of the city council. The mayor's signature would be required on that home rule petition in order to even send it to the state. And then the state, then the state has to take...
So here's another way to go about it. Let's put this in a committee to discuss what we're going to do, and if we are in fact going to go forward with proposing a four-year term for city councillors, then we can get the nuts and bolts of that done. But before we do that, we probably should have this in legislative affairs or whatever committee you choose.
That would have been my recommendation, is to put it into, so legislate, anyone else?
So I withdraw my substitute motion, and I ask that we go to legislative affairs with this. Thanks.
So this will be further discussed in legislative affairs.
Calendar item number 17, motion presented by councillor Janino that the city council approve an act providing for violent act injury retirement benefits for retired police officer Leo McCaskill. Section one, notwithstanding any general or special law to the contrary, Leo McCaskill, a retired police officer of the city of Revere Police Department and a member of the Revere Retirement System, may reapply for retirement benefits pursuant to section seven of chapter 32 of the general laws if the Revere Retirement Board determines, pursuant to said section seven of said chapter 32 as amended by chapter 149 of the Acts of 2024, that Leo McCaskill was retired for, for a violent act injury. All of his retirement benefits dispensed after such determination shall be paid and administered in accordance with retirement for a violent act injury pursuant to said section seven of chapter 32 as so amended. Section two, this act shall take effect upon its passage.
Councillor Janino.
Just for the record, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts recently passed a law, had it been in effect today, Leo would have qualified under the retirement of it. This, this law basically covers officers who are violently injured in the line of duty, violently injured by either guns, stabbing, run over, and they become victims of a crime during the act. Currently, Leo's not covered under the act because the date of the injury was when the paperwork was being filed and sent up on the state house. They said, had it been into effect today, he would have been covered. So I'm looking for a home rule to have Leo be able to reapply for the retirement under the bill to cover him. You know, this, this bill that they passed, it covers police, it covers fire, it covers EMTs, you know, first responders that are violently, violently injured, not just a slip and fall, not a regular motor vehicle accident. There's, there's some, there's more to it. There's a lot more to it. And we owe it to our guys and ladies that protect us to protect them. And currently, they retire under 72%, and that's it. Leo would have worked the day after the accident, had he been able to. He came into work, he worked his shift, he wasn't there for an hour and a half, left in an ambulance, never to return again, not by his choice, not his choice at all. So I think we owe it to our people protecting us to protect them. And that's it.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Silvestri.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chris, thank you for filing this. Councillor Janino, thank you for filing this. Leo, thank you for your service to both this country and the city of Revere, and I think we believe this 100%. We, we should support this. If, if he was injured today, he'd be getting that full retirement, so it, it's our duty to give him that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say a little bit about Leo on his behalf. Thank you, Chris, for putting this motion in. It was wonderful. When I, when Leo was an officer, a police officer, he was always concerned about the homeless encampments that were around the city. I heard that there was a baby, a bassinet, in an encampment, and I was really concerned that there was a baby there, and it was in my area. So I called Leo, and he, personally, I called him. I didn't even call him, he was, I don't even think he was on duty. And I called him, and I said, can you check this out? I feel like there's a baby in an encampment, homeless camp, encampment. We need really to check this. So he said, okay. He went down there, and he called me, and he said, there's no baby, they're using the bassinet for, I don't know, something else. He was, he's a stand, he was a stand-up officer, great, great, great to work with. He truly loved his job, and I really feel that we should give him this, these benefits. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Zambudo.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank my colleague from Ward 6 for putting this in for, for Leo. I don't know how many people know the story about what happened to Leo, but he was always a first-rate cop, and, and I can't think of anybody more deserving of this particular law. And so provided we follow all the procedures to do this correctly so that it does go through, I certainly will support it, and I think anybody that wouldn't has no heart at all. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Garino Sawaya.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, councillor Janino, for putting this motion in. I've known Leo for a very long time, and I will never, ever forget that day when I got that phone call saying that Leo got shot. It was heart-wrenching. I, I couldn't believe it. He is such a people person. He loves everybody, and he deserves this. He absolutely deserves this. So I'm 100% for Leo getting this. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Chief.
Counsel, I want to thank you for all your full support here for this matter to support former officer Leo McCaskill, who was seriously injured in the line of duty, apprehending a felony suspect, and as a result, he was feloniously assaulted with a motor vehicle. Officer McCaskill served this country, did two tours of duty with the United States Marine Corps, then came on the police department, worked on the police department for over 25 years, did an exemplary job, one of the most dependable officers in the police department. And, you know, it was an awful thing that happened to him, but that's just reality, what may happen, especially in this line of work. And to support him, we have to wholeheartedly support our public safety employees.
Absolutely.
And unfortunately, this bill, the timing of it, it just missed Officer McCaskill. So I've been in contact with folks from the state house, as well as the city solicitor and other chiefs and the Chiefs of Police Association, and we just want to put this in the right direction, and with your full support, it definitely helps us, and we're going to move this forward to give him what he is due. He's taken care of the community for many years. Now it's time for us, as city officials and representatives of the city, to take care of him for his exemplary work over the years. So I just want to thank everybody for all your kind words and all your support here in this matter. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Before we refer this to subcommittee, we have to request a detailed analysis and vote from the retirement board pursuant to section 2 dot 12 dot 120 of the revised ordinances. So with that request, I will refer this to legislative affairs.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Calendar item number 18, motion presented by councillors McKenna and Zambudo that the mayor requests the DEI director to provide the city council with a cost estimate to provide an interpreter for city council meetings utilizing the city-owned interpretation earpiece devices.
Councillor McKenna.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. I just feel that we need to, because we have such a diverse community right now, and a lot of people don't speak English, and they come to the meetings. I really do think that we really need an interpreter to give us the, to, to put this in Spanish or whatever else language that we need, probably more Spanish than, than anything. But I really feel that it's necessary to have that in the council. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Zambudo.
I think my colleague said it all, and I see the director is here, and so we can bring him up and, and ask him, I guess.
Thank you, councillor. Councillor Haas.
Thank you, Mr. President. I definitely think translation services are necessary, and I would love to see the city partner with high school students or even the youth works, kids that are involved with that program, maybe save some, there would be some cost-cutting, cost-saving measures, and you also build nice relationships with the students in the city. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Good evening, sir. Name an address for the record.
Steve Morabito, 281 Broadway, Director of Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. I'm here to let you know that, yes, we can and we will get a cost analysis for interpretation services. Currently, we do provide interpretation if residents give us 48-hour business notice. We can do that with no issues whatsoever. Some of the things, the reason I'm here is just to get clarification so I can tailor the cost analysis to the expectations of the city council. I'm going to go from my left to the right, right. So councillor, the councillor to my left mentioned you partnering with the students' youth works. There are some, some kind of guidelines for interpretations, like currently, we do have an intern in our office, but he's helping out with, like, for instance, translations. And the difference between translation and interpretation, translations are taking someone, taking a piece of paper and writing it, so, whereas interpretation is verbal, verbal translation, basically, verbal interpretation. But at the end of the day, we need a professional interpreter. Like, if we're, if we're translating or interpreting here and there, that's fine, but when it comes to the council agenda, it has to be a professional interpreter because we're dealing with legal matter, legal situations.
May I ask you a question? Sorry to interrupt you, director. Who's the gentleman that's been here with the earpieces? Because he is fantastic, and so are those earpieces. I, I also know that that comes at a cost, and I'm curious if you know that off the top of your head.
So the good thing is, we own those earpieces. We own, so what we're paying for is the professional services. Obviously, if, just let me go back to what I was saying. So as far as partnering with the youth, it's a great idea for some city hall tasks, like if we're translating flyers, essential flyers, but if there's legal situations, amendments, we cannot have a student do it. It has to be some professional and is certified to interpret. As far as the councillor to my right, she mentioned languages, you know? We get into different ranges of price based on how many languages. So we would base it on our Language Access Plan, which you keep hearing repeatedly over and over again. So according to our Language Access Plan, based on the federal census, we are supposed to interpret the threshold of 10% of the population, which would be the Spanish. As far as translation, it's 5%. So we would want to interpret in Spanish. If that's, that would be my suggestion. If it's the will of the council, I'm here, and the administration is willing to, and wants to give you a cost analysis catered to your expectations. And that's why I'm here. I want to know as far as, are you looking for just city count, live council, city council meetings, or city council subcommittee meetings? Or city council subcommittee meetings, I'm sorry.
I'm, I'm just looking for a professional that's non-biased, that's, that's, someone that's professional, that has no skin in the game, that's going to say it the way it is. I just, that's, that's what came up for me, because in the last couple of weeks, in the last couple of months, it's been different people translating, and the, they weren't on task. So I just wanted this, I just want someone that's going to be unbiased, that's going to say what is the, what a councillor is saying true to, to what, what is said. That's what I'm looking for. So I am looking for a professional.
So he wants to know the extent of it. Do you want just the regular council meetings? Do you want subcommittee meetings?
Yeah, I would say, I, I would say all of it, because... Yeah, I would say, I would say all of it, because, you know, you have.
When you say all of it?
I would say.
All of boards and commissions, just all of city council meetings, city council and subcommittee?
I would say city council meetings. I think that's where mostly people attend. So I would say city council meetings. We could start from there and see where it grows, you know, if it grows to a subcommittee.
So based on two thousand twenty-three hours that I collected, so a city council and subcommittee met seventy-one point two-two hours for the year. But the way this city council has been going, you guys have been earning your money up here, because you guys have been going like four hours every council meeting. So the question is, do you want it, because what happens is, a lot of your business gets referred to subcommittee. So if you have an only interpretation at council meetings for public hearings, like, do you want the interpretations for just public hearing meetings, all the live city council meetings, or do you want us to include the subcommittees as well, minus the boards and commissions?
No, I see what you're saying, definitely.
And I don't mean to bombard you with the questions. I just want to give you the fear.
If you say that the, you know, the product is mostly in the subcommittees, then maybe we should just do it in the subcommittees.
I think we should do both, if you want.
I, Steve, I agree. I think you should, I think you should get a price for both. I think you should, you should also try multiple languages as well. I think Arabic, French Creole, I think Mandarin, I think these are all, as well as Spanish, that we should look into the prices.
Portuguese.
So my next question would be that prompts me, do you want human interpretation, live interpretation, or do you want AI-powered interpretation, or both? Because, so for instance, like Wordly, for two hundred hours, it's about twenty-five thousand yearly. And with AI, with AI interpretation, it's less accurate as live interpretation. AI kind of learns as it goes along.
Voices and stuff, yeah. I think we would need live interpretation for business.
Yeah. So I think at the end of the day, some of the prices I got, like for fifty, this is AI, interpreters go anywhere in this area, go from a hundred to a hundred and fifty per hour, and some of them actually do a three-hour minimum. So that's something we want to keep in mind. Do we want to contract an interpreter, or do we want to pay him hourly? Thing is, if we exceed a certain price, it has to go out to bid, or we have to get permission through the purchasing. So there's a lot of ifs and ands, but I'll give you the best cost analysis that I can. But that's all I really can provide you with right now. Like, so I think the most it would cost if you, would be, if we contracted it, would probably be like twenty-two to twenty-five thousand, based on two thousand twenty-three hours.
Hours.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Zambudo.
So just for the heck of it, we had a gentleman here last week, and he was very good, and I think he's sufficient. And what does someone like him cost?
Four hundred and fifty dollars for the evening.
So that was for three hours?
So it's about a hundred and fifty an hour.
Hundred and fifty an hour?
Yep.
Okay.
The issue, when you pay, when you don't have someone on a retainer or if you don't have a contract, say if someone backs out last minute, you can't, there's no wiggle room to negotiate and be like, hey, listen, we can just say.
I get it. And I think that's reasonable. That's reasonable. Thank you.
Excellent.
That's really all I need, you know?
Thank you, Councilor. Councilor Argenzio.
Thank you. Mr. Morabito, when you say interpretation, I know we have the earpieces. So if somebody's sitting in the audience and someone is at the podium speaking Spanish, for example, that happened to me on October twenty-first at the subcommittee meeting. I didn't have an earpiece because I was in the audience, so I couldn't understand what was happening. Is this all through earpieces?
This would all be through earpieces. Now, when I got a quote through Wordly about in January, that was actually my first initiative when I took the role of DEI Director. I looked into interpretation for city council meetings, and I sat in a meeting with Bob Dunbar from Revere TV, our city clerk, Ashley Melnick, and George from IT. So I want to make sure everyone was sitting in the meeting. It was very productive. But at the end of the day, they, they were AI-powered. So what they would have done was, not only would you have, they would have a, Bob could, I don't know the technicalities, but they would have a mixing audio device. So as the council spoke, it would come up on a dual screen. But I think we should hold off a little bit and go on the hourly rate for right now, because I'm working with Bob Dunbar, and we may have something in the works once the council chamber is on the horizon. I don't want to get your hopes up.
Okay.
I'd rather set a low expectation than surprise you and wow you afterwards.
And just a second question. You spoke about Bob Dunbar. Will you watch it at home on TV or on YouTube? Is there any way to get close, the captioning at the bottom of the?
Absolutely. So if you, if you watch the Revere, so if you watch the Revere City Council via YouTube, there's actually a language toolbar, and I think you can choose over eighty languages.
Okay. I didn't realize that. Thank you very much.
And also on our websites, same. I know some people are asking questions about the Water Department, how they would know if they went on the Water Department. We also updated all our websites, so there's a dropdown as well.
Oh, very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. We have some people in line to ask, to make a statement.
And I just want to close with, I will definitely be providing with that cost analysis. Or actually, we're going to go hourly, right?
Thank you very much, Steve. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please.
Angelica Lee, eleven Harrington Street. I appreciate really this, this point, because, for example, for me, my English, I say is poor, but I understand more than I can to talk. And I think so, it's very important, this, this translation, because most people today speak Spanish. In here, it's Portuguese too, and Chinese too. Yeah? This, it really, the people feel frustration, yeah, all the time, because it's difficult to me that I learn a little bit more for explaining than other people, but it's more easy if they have the opportunity for express every single thing they're feeling clear, no? Because it's difficult. I think so, this initiative is very well, and I knew this is expensive, but maybe came to, to find another code, more options, yeah? If you give one, one gift for the people, I think so, it's important. You look good, no? Because you're thinking in all people, not in the English people, yeah? I don't know. Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Thank you very much. Good evening, ma'am. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening again, Olga Glendon Street, Revere. I'm here to express my support for implementing interpretation services for these public council meetings and others in a city as diverse as Revere. It's essential that everyone, regardless of language proficiency, can engage and understand the issues affecting our community. When residents feel informed and included, they are more likely to participate, voice their concerns, and contribute to positive change. Offering interpretation services will not only enhance accessibility, but also demonstrate our commitment to inclusivity and equity. I will send, it will send a powerful message that this council values the voices of all community members and is dedicated to ensure they have equal opportunity to be heard. Thank you so much, and I know money is involved again.
Thank you, Counsel. On the motion, all in favor?
Excuse me, Mr. President. Before you gavel, just one last thing. I just want to say one thing we are going to, that my assistant, Esma, just did. We emailed all the chairs of every board and commission, and they put in an asterisk at the, on every agenda, saying you can, we will provide interpretation within forty-eight-hour business notice, just so you know.
Councilor McKenna.
Stephen, what about a grant?
I've looked into them. Unfortunately, they're very lengthy. I haven't, I've been going on GrantWorks and looking. I haven't seen any recently, but we do have a grant writer, and I know she's going to be in high demand when she starts in November, so.
Okay. Thank you.
But yeah, I have been keeping my eyes open.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number nineteen, motion presented by Council President Cogliandro that the mayor direct the chief of police to conduct heavier enforcement of the no-trucks regulation on Harris Street. Large trucks are driving down the street to avoid bell circle, traffic causing debris, noise, and damage to the pavement.
Motion speaks for itself. All in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number twenty, motion presented by Council President Cogliandro that the mayor appear before the city council in executive session to discuss the status of eminent domain case regarding the Wonderland site.
Permission to speak from the chair. Spoke with the mayor about this earlier. He's more than willing. This is just housekeeping to keep our thumb on what's going on with the cost, the potential costs. So on the motion, or anyone else want to say anything? On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? So ordered.
Calendar item number twenty-one, motion presented by Counselor Garino-Sawayo that the Traffic Commission be requested to amend Schedule Nine Resident Parking Streets twenty-four-hour enforcement of the revised ordinances of the City of Revere by inserting Dashwood Street Evenside entire length.
Counselor Garino-Sawayo.
Move to Traffic.
Traffic Commission.
Calendar item number twenty-two, motion presented by Counselor McKenna that the mayor request MASTDOT to install sufficient pedestrian lighting under all overpasses throughout the city in the interest of public safety. Counselor Zambudo is recorded as recused from this motion.
Councilor McKenna.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be short. We have five underpasses that have really poor lighting, and with all the apartments that are going up and all the people that are walking and not driving, this is really important to do. The other thing I would like to do is add to this motion that a net be put down under Pointer Pines, underpass, we've asked the MASTDOT, and we got the state rep to ask too, because we have a lot of pigeons that hang out there. So now that they put the new apartment building and people are walking underneath it, it's crucial that we clean it up and stop the pigeons from wrecking the walkway. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nowosowski.
No, I pass, Mr. President.
On the motion, all in favor, all opposed? Ayes. So ordered.
Mr. President, before we adjourn, if you plan just a couple PSAs?
Absolutely, Counselor.
Thank you. First of all, I know Veterans Day is coming up in two weeks, and of course, we want to thank all our veterans, but just as a reminder, the city and the Revere Veterans Committee are having a dinner dance on Monday, November eleventh, at five PM at the Beachfront VFW. Tickets are twenty dollars each, a Chinese buffet, and dancing to Alan Labella. So anybody that needs tickets, contact myself or Al Terminello. All veterans and citizens and friends are invited to attend. Second of all, this came out October tenth from National Grid, and it affects certain areas in Revere. So I just want to remind everybody that, I guess tomorrow night, they're going to be shutting down some electricity on streets such as Albert Ave, Bennington Street, Campbell Ave, Charles Ave, Clock Road, Cove Street, Curtis Road, Elliott Road, Everod, Garfield Ave, Green Street, North Shore Road, Overlook Ave, Pleasant Street, Porter Ave, Pratt Street, Pratt Place, and Revere Beach Parkway. And I guess they're updating some of their electrical, and also Standards Road, Washburn Ave, Winter Bay Ave, Walcott Road, Woods Ave. So I guess they're changing some of their, upgrading their electricity, and they're going to be shutting down between ten PM and six AM tomorrow night. So just to let everybody know. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. There is no further business. The next city council meeting will be the following Monday, November fourth, at six PM. Thank you all for your participation this evening, and have a good night.